All right, it's just six forty-five, so we'll see if we can get started on time and stay on time. I'll call the joint meeting of city council on board of finance to order. We'll start with the pledge. I'm just noticing it too. There is nobody in the audience since you could tell when it's the first night, night, nice night of the year here, and everybody's tired from the UConn win last night, too. All right, let's start with the approval of the minutes. Number one, these are the meeting minutes from March twelfth.
Move approval.
Second.
Any changes or amendments? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to the consent agenda, which is A through L. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? No, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number three is a transfer of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from the general fund contingency account to human resources. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any comments, questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, carries, excuse me. Board of Finance to transfer eight thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars from the general fund contingency account to the Board of Finance for professional fees?
So moved.
Second.
How much are questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Diane, that is the fastest to your report. I know you're not ready, but we'll do the month's reports.
She's always ready.
So this can be a quick one.
Perfect, there we go.
Good. You might actually start a council meeting on time for a long first time.
Good evening, everyone. It's a beautiful day out. I actually did get out for a little bit. It's nice. Couple of things I just wanted to point out. It was in the report, but tax revenue through through March was at ninety-eight point nine percent, but this report did not reflect a collection that Anne was pursuing. So she collected right after we ran the munis report, an additional payment of a hundred and thirty-seven, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in taxes. So that is reflected in her charts. So there's, just to point that out, she's been doing a great job going after some of the delinquent collections and working with Corp Counsel's Office. I know it's been a joint effort on their part. Higher your tax revenue, where everything is pretty much in line with where we were last year. And our motor vehicle sup, I think we will come in about four to five hundred thousand dollars more than last year. Building permit revenue, we're slightly behind where we were dollar-wise. We're at a hundred and six point five percent of the budget. Conveyance fees, we're slightly behind, but last year we did receive one huge conveyance on a transfer of property. So it's a little bit skewed from last year. Investment earnings, I do want to say we're doing very well there. As I reported last month, we had, have made some changes in some of the cash flow and some of the accounts, so we're actually earning more interest. So I anticipate, we're, we're doing really well. I mean, right now we're at a hundred and fifty-one percent, one point four million dollars. I anticipate, based on what I'm seeing right now, that we will exceed two million dollars in investment income. So that's really good news. What I do want to just point out, I was asked earlier where we think we might end the year. Just on revenues alone, I estimate there will be about three million dollars in surplus from a couple of different areas: investment income, taxes, conveyance fees, and then also there was that one point six million dollar grant that we received, that the municipal revenue sharing, which we didn't budget because we can't count on it. It would be nice if we can, because it would help next year. But all of that is about three million dollars. On the expenditure side, nothing new to report from what I've been saying with Public Works, fuel and supply costs, and our liability insurance, but just taking a quick look at the city accounts. I know we will have definitely some funds left over in our snow accounts, probably about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we make right to the line. And then on the contingency, right now after tonight's actions, there's seven hundred and forty-seven thousand left there. So right there, very conservative estimate, about a million dollars, just on the expenditure side, and again, that is conservative. I wish I can give you more information on the Board of Ed, but I know with the last report they gave the Board of Finance, they were running at about a four million dollars deficit without not knowing what the excess cost reimbursement was going to be, but I know they are working really hard to kind of bring that number down and have done a spending freeze. As you know, the budget was presented in total last Wednesday. The next workshop right now is still scheduled for next Wednesday, the seventeenth, but if not needed, it will be canceled. And then the Board of Finance will be voting on April twenty-third. I wanted to say August, but April twenty-third, they'll be voting on it, and then you all vote on it at the joint meeting May twentieth. So are there any questions? There's not too many, too much other stuff going on at this point.
You have a way, easy night.
Yeah. Anything on Zoom? I was just scanning the room here. We didn't have anything. Anybody from Zoom? Nope. I think we're good. Thanks, Diane. Enjoy the evening. You can still have some light out there. Yeah. Without any other business come before us, correct, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We literally have a nine-minute break. Can't start the meeting before seven, so we'll start right at seven.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
All right, it's seven P M. I am going to call the city council meeting to order and ask that we all join in the pledge of allegiance. Flag to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first things first, congratulations to UConn last night. I think I have probably fifty requests on Facebook to have a Donovan Klingon parade. We'll work on it. I don't have that much authority on that, I don't think. But his agent did reach out to me today and say Donovan would be interested. I don't know what that really means, but we'll find out. And congratulations to Huskies. Just for the record, too, this is the fourth championship in a row that Donovan Klingon has brought home. So in his junior year, it was a COVID year, so they didn't have a state championship. They had regional finals throughout their conferences, and they did win that conference with him there. He won the state championship with Central, and now two in a row here. So it is an amazing feat and great for Donovan, so go UConn. I do want to also just make an announcement, and we'll do a moment of silence for this, that is an unfortunate incident that happened that maybe some of you heard about. So Albert Sonier, who is somebody I actually went to school with, a disabled gentleman, if you ever went to one of the Blues games, he would be stationed right outside of the gate where you have to have your ticket already. Unfortunately, he was hit, hit by what I think was a distracted driver and succumbed from his injuries after a couple of weeks. And I think it's just a good reminder to all, and of course, we have nobody here today, or nobody on Zoom, but maybe somebody watching this after, is that we need to be very careful out there. Where as we get a livable, walkable downtown, we need to pay attention to what's going on out there. So our condolences to his family, and I'd like to take a moment of silence for Al. Thank you very much. All right, we go from happy to a little sad, but we will end on a better note. I see Scott out in the audience, and I just wanted to read a proclamation in a second for National Library Week, but I wanted to also personally thank Scott, since he is the only employee here right now. But today is actually National Library and Appreciation Day, and so we thank all of our people that work in both of our public libraries who do a great job. They did a great job through COVID to keep things open, and they continue to innovate and do a great job. So here is the proclamation that we'll present to you in a second, but let me go ahead and read it. And actually, I told Kirsten she needs to print this bigger next time, because it's getting harder and harder to read. So it's a little lengthy. Hang on with me. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions striving to ensure equitable access to information and services for all members of the community. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, developing and expanding collections, programs, and services that are as diverse as the population they serve. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries play a pivotal role in economic development by providing resources and support for job seekers, entrepreneurs, and small businesses, thus contributing to local prosperity and growth. Whereas libraries are treasured institutions that preserve our collective heritage and knowledge, safeguarding both physical and digital resources for present and future generations. Whereas libraries are an essential public good and fundamental institutions in democratic societies, working to improve society, protect the rights of free speech, lifelong learning and literacy, and promote free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jeffrey Cagiano, Mayor of the Bristol, of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, proclaim April seventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, to be National Library Week in Bristol. During this week, I encourage all residents to visit the library and make use of the services and opportunities they unlock for us every day, and they should get their library card if they don't already have it. We've been increasing that for the years to come. So congratulations to you, Scott. I want to hand you the proclamation.
Thank you, Scott.
Well, look this way and smile.
Yeah, in a way. Take your photos first.
And all that. We, I didn't stay there long enough either. That's too bad, but we need you, not me, anyway.
All right. Just hold it up. Yeah, we don't need him. No.
It's a better picture now.
Thank you very much.
Turn this way? Please?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number two is the approval of the minutes. I'm going to do them separately, and I'll tell you one a second. The approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting on March twelfth. I believe we have one amendment, so we did have a voice vote, and there was one vote in opposition in six B, so I just wanted to entertain a motion to accept those meeting minutes with that change.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And B is the approval of the special city council meeting held on April fourth. Can I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions, additions or changes on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. I don't think we have any in the room here. We do not. Anybody on Zoom wish to speak under public participation?
At least say hi, Dante. Break up the non.
No, that's all right. I'm going to enjoy this, because I'm tired from last night, so we'll keep moving. Number four is announcements. I'm going to start on my left. Go ahead, Andrew, you're going to start this month.
Okay, another reminder, it's time for kindergarten. Got to get your kids signed up for kindergarten. If they're going to be five years old on or before September twenty-fourth, they're eligible. You can find all the forms needed on the Bristol Public Schools website onto the links through the main page, including the waiver. If your child will turn five during the fall of twenty twenty-four, and if you feel they're ready for kindergarten, they are welcome to be registered at the same time. All children who are registered by the end of the school year will be entered to have their first day of school on a fire truck, or I think a police officer as well. This, are we having this?
I think there's two. Two fire trucks.
Two fire trucks, okay.
Excellent.
You have an option of two of the fire, one of the fire trucks. And then on June twenty-ninth, the SRC is coming, put together a family fun day on June twenty-ninth for the rain day of January thirtieth. They're looking for sponsors and vendors, and the forms to register are all on the Board of Ed website. They also have the Appetite for Reading has a basket of books for the Head Start on Lake Avenue. They have a free library put out, Saint Vincent de Paul Mission. They'd like to build two more, but they're cost about between five and seven hundred. First little free library was at the WIC, was refurbished by a Eagle Scout. So if anybody knows any Eagle Scouts or people that want to volunteer to redo these libraries, I'm sure they were appreciated. Appreciate you to do it. Or know somebody that can. The Sports Hall of Fame is hosting a sports trivia event on Wednesday, May eighth, at seven P M. at the Historical Society. The doors open at six, six-thirty P M. Teams of up to four will be allowed. Individuals may able to sign up with an assigned to a team. Advanced signup is encouraged. You can contact Dave Mills at nine-three-oh-eight-three-six-nine or Bob Fremant at nine-seven-eight-seven-five-one-seven. In the summer programs are live on the public, are on the Parks and Rec Department. You can go right through bristlyrec.com.
Thank you, Andrew. Cheryl?
Yes, I would like to start with the upcoming events at Downtown Bristol Live. On the twentieth, we have The Drifters. Now, this is twenty years of uninterrupted hits that made them the most, second most successful recording artist of all time. And some of the songs you may remember are Up on the Roof, Under the Boardwalk, Dance With Me, Stand By Me. This is concerts almost sold out, but tickets are still available for forty dollars. That is on Saturday, the twentieth. But the big event that we're all excited about is, and I brought my prop, we have Star Wars Day coming, May fourth. Whoops. I guess I'm not going to, I better go to Padawan Training. Okay. May the fourth be with you at Downtown Lives, Star Wars Day. This event, it starts at three P M. And goes all the way through nine-thirty for the admission price of twenty dollars. There'll be an art gallery. There'll be pictures taken with your favorite Star War characters. Bristol Public Library is giving away some books with Star War themes. There's a podcast. There's a Padawan Training Institute, and then the movie. So that is on Saturday, May fourth. Okay, you can stop now. The City Arts and Culture Commission is going to be holding our section, second cultural arts festival on Saturday, June eighth. And at this point, we're looking for artists that want to be part of the festival. I encourage you to contact Ariana at the Parks Department if you are interested. I have a link on my Facebook page, my city council Facebook page, and we'll share that on some of the other pages. So it's a call for artists at this point. This weekend, however, is another event, and this is the annual O M. show. This is the annual fundraiser for the Boys and Girls Club of the Bristol Family Center. Tickets can now be purchased at the door for forty dollars, but the option to order dinners no longer available. Those had to be done by last night. The show is this Friday and Saturday. Showtime is six-thirty, and it will be held at the Carousel Museum. Eric's going to do the fishing derbies. So I'll just add, I don't know, do you have the Pine Lake Fishing Derby?
I do not.
Okay.
Do that one, because I don't, I actually don't have the date right now.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't.
The Pine Lake Fishing Derby Tournament will be Saturday, May eleventh. That's Mother's Day weekend from seven A M. for those five through fifteen years old. Pine Lake, which is off Pine Street, it's live bait only, and there are plenty of prizes to be won. Coming up again over in Forestville, very active part of town, can't slow us down over there, is May fifth. We're having the annual Paquabic River Duck Race. This raffle has amazing prizes with the grand prize of fifteen hundred dollars. Tickets are still five dollars, and you can purchase them at many local vendors, including True Value, the hardware store, or the Parks and Rec. This Saturday, they'll be selling them at Stop and Shop in Forestville from ten to four, and the following two Saturdays on the Route Six Stop and Shop. And you can also find a booth in front of the Old Nucci's selling the tickets, and all proceeds benefit the Forestville Village Association. I wanted to share, and I'm sorry, keep going, but on April twentieth, again, you can do this in the morning, go to The Drifters in the evening, is the city's annual citywide cleanup day. Starting at eight-thirty A M., you can pick up supplies, pickers, trash bags, gloves at Fifty-One High Street, which is the Parks Office and Youth Services Office, and then head out to your own neighborhood to clean up. Let's all go out and get those nips and other litter. And so that will be on Saturday, the twentieth. And that is it for my announcements, so thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Sebastian, announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing as it's National Library Week, I have a couple items from the library here. This Thursday at one P M. at the library, Newbury Honor-winning author Rajani LaRoca will be our first youth author luncheon for a Q and A discussion and book signing. So I know last year you were there for our author luncheon at the Doubletree. The library boards decided to build on that and try and put on some, some youth author luncheons and see how, how that gets a response from some of the youth in town. The author luncheons do great. Lots of folks there. We actually had an event there the other day. And it was just the crowd. There was no seat down in the basement of the library related to actually the same author. There was a book giveaway, I think. So we're, we're doing a, a youth author luncheon there. The recommended age is nine and over. Lunch is included. There's no fee, but attendees have to call the library at five-eight-four-seven-seven-eight-seven, extension three, to register. So that's a good inaugural event there for a youth author luncheon, and we'll see how that goes and see if we can get that annually going at the, the library or in another venue, and try and get some kids interested in reading and, and sign up for library cards. In addition, if you're at the library, pick up a passport to Connecticut Libraries, which are available there. The passport to Connecticut Libraries is a statewide program to encourage people to visit libraries statewide. There's a hundred fifty libraries participating for folks to get their passports stamped, as many libraries as they can. Two adults and two children will be chosen to win a two-hundred-dollar Visa gift card through entrance in the program. So if you go to the library, you can sign up for a library card. You can get a passport. They have more details about the program. And that's a month-long program that's running from April first to the thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. Jackie?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one small announcement. Just want to remind everyone that Public Works will be picking up leaf bags throughout the month of April. And I know it's been difficult to clean your yard with all this rain we've been having, but that's what it is. So throughout the month of April, we're picking up leaf bags.
Thanks, Jackie. Today was a nice day.
Yeah, today was a nice day.
All right, Bristol, Bristol Parks and Rec will be doing the Perry J. Spindelli Fishing Derby at Page Park. It'll be held on the twenty-seventh at seven A M. to ten A M. Registration starts at six-thirty, and registration is free. There are prizes for everyone, as with last year. The event is for children ages two to thirteen years old. Participants should bring their own poles and bait. Please visit Bristol My Rec for a list of full rules and additional information. Next, the next day, April twenty-eighth, American Legion Post two oh nine will be having a fishing derby at Rockwell Park from eight A M. to eleven A M. Registration from six-thirty to eight A M. It's also free. It's for ages sixteen and under. Two trout per participant. Worms and mealworms will be provided for free. Steve's Top Dog Food Truck will be there selling breakfast, and there'll be trophies and prizes that will be awarded. Also, it's National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Youth and Community Services are at the parks. There was an event held today, but there will be another one held Thursday, the eleventh, at Rockwell Park from ten A M. to two P M. There will be snacks, games, giveaways, raffles, and resources. All children, parents, and caregivers are welcome to attend. I also want to remind everybody that the work is now underway on the Jerome Avenue Bridge between Sturbridge and Coolidge Roads, so please find alternate routes. If you're going that way, for more information, it can be found on the Public Works website. And last but not least, I would like to congratulate Chief Morello for being appointed interim chief now that Chief Gould has retired.
Great, thanks. Just back to the Jerome Avenue Bridge. We had a lot of questions, so just clarification for everybody, and hopefully people watch this again later. We don't have a crowd, but all of the businesses and the homes are accessible all the way up to the bridge. So it's just the bridge that's closed. So I know Sturbridge Road is right there. There's a package store. There's, you know, the, the park center, there's, yeah.
It just no through traffic.
Yeah, you just can't go through. The bridge will not be accessible. So it's a pretty good detour. We just don't want people to go a mile down the street, realize they got to come a mile back and go around. So. Thank you, Eric. Sue?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of repeats from last month. I'll start with the Bristol Exchange Club's twenty-twenty-four Honoring Heroes Dinner that will be held on June twenty-seventh from six P M. to ten P M. at the AquaTurf. This year, we'll be honoring three of our finest officers and a couple of cadets, and all the funds raised will be for the police memorial. For ticket information, you can go to thebristolexchangeclub@gmail.com address and get more information. Also, a repeat from last month, just a reminder, the Bristol Police Department will be holding a prescription takeback on April twenty-seventh from ten to one at the Farmington Avenue Walgreens location. Also, Bristol Cert, in, in coordination with the Bristol Public Library, is holding a, an emergency preparedness for Bristol residents on Wednesday, April seventeenth, six-thirty to eight P M. And this is at the main location of the Bristol Public Library. I believe there's also a Saturday, April thirteenth session at two P M. at the Man Ross Library. It was a little confusing online, so all you have to do is go to www.bristollib.com or call one of the libraries just to register. It is a free event. Also, I just wanted to mention, the Carousel Museum has a program that they're doing on Sunday, May fifth, from one to three. It is Girls in Steam, and it's sponsored by the Women and Girls Fund at the Main Street Community Foundation. I kind of read the description of this free event, and it sounds really exciting, something my daughter would have loved. For more information on that one, go to www.thecarouselmuseum.org, and there's also a very similar boys event on May nineteenth, so you can get information on either one of those.
Thanks. Did we miss any announcements? All right, hearing none, we will go on to number five, which is the consent agenda. Cheryl, I believe that you wanted to take off G. You had a question about it, but I'd love leave it there. Okay, that's fine. So I'm going to ask when we do it that we just add a little bit more clarification for everybody else, remember, on that one. Does anybody wish to withdraw anything else from the consent agenda? It's A through M. No, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, A through M.
Second.
And then Cheryl, just for everybody too, because typically we have more information in the consent agenda, and you had asked what the G was, which was the Wazinski Way. Yep. in the consent agenda, and you had asked what the G was, which was the Wazinski Way. Yep. Excellent. Yep. And, uh, this is ARPA funding as well through that project. So that's good. All right, uh, any other comments about the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? A motion carries. We will move on to our reports and committee reports, and we'll start with you, Sue, on three real estate items.
Okay. I'll start with six A. Um, I will read the motion first. I hereby move that the following property be referred to the Planning Commission for a Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-four report. Map O two, Lot one twenty-nine dash two Violet Drive. I further move that this matter be referred to Public Works to assess the pond on the lot. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and to review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Anything else to add, Sue? Just give a little background on where this is for people.
This is something that we have been working on. Um, this is a property that has been encroached, city-owned property that has been encroached. Um, but this has been a process because we've had to, uh, our court counsel has, has had to do a lot of work, um, getting authorization and permission to be able to take this open space, uh, property that was donated to the city of Bristol and for us to be able to clear that up and to be able to resolve the issue of the encroachment.
Yep.
Through the chair. Um, so this is just to refer to planning, but it hasn't determined the economic value of that land, should there be any later on and recruitment back to the city, correct?
This is just for the eight dash twenty-four.
And that's the same on the next one. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed? Motion carries. And as we said, the second one is same type of situation, just different property.
Correct. Um, I hereby move that the following property be referred to the Planning Commission for a Connecticut General Statute eight dash twenty-four report. Map zero two, Lot one twenty-nine Candlewood Drive. I further move that this matter be referred to the Public Works to assess the pond and/or wetlands on the lot. I further move that this matter be referred to the Corporation Council to prepare and or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And the third one, Memorial Day is coming.
Yes, it is. I hereby move to grant to Forestville American Legion Post two zero nine the use of city-owned property known as forty-three East Main Street, map forty-one, Lot eight dash one, AKA the Loretty property from May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four through May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four for a staging area for their Memorial Day Parade. I further move that the matter be referred to Corporation Council's office for insurance compliance. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this one? Cheryl, I'll just give you forewarning. I'm not sure yet, but it looks like I have a family wedding Memorial Day weekend. Might need to get a new partner to announce.
Well, I'm kind of on, on hold too, because you know, I got a baby due, not me. Okay, my first grandchild. My first grandchild is due June second, but I plan hopefully to be here for Memorial Day. But, uh, we'll make it work.
Everybody be on notice then. So that's, it's a fun event. Uh, it's the same thing we do every year there. So this is, uh, very pro forma. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carries. Sue, do you have any other committee reports? I think you were gonna do something.
I'll, I'll just take a couple of minutes, um, for code enforcement. Uh, we've been extremely busy as of late. Um, and I'll just give you a few numbers just to kind of be able to reflect how, how busy this team has been working. Um, in March, there were thirty-six new complaints. Out of those, a, and that's actually, um, so now from the beginning of the year till now, we're up to a hundred and eleven. Notice of violation letters, thirty-two went out in March, so we're up to seventy-seven for the year. A total of follow-up visits in March were a hundred and sixty-three. Citation tickets that were issued in March, eleven. Uh, we ended up closing sixteen cases in March and total number of site visits was eighty. And we condemned one property in March. Um, there were no tall grass complaints in.
Yet.
Yeah, yeah. Also, just with some tickets that were issued in the month of March, uh, the building department issued six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars worth of citations. And Public Works issued two thousand eight hundred and forty-four. That's for shopping carts and illegal bulk. So we've been extremely busy this month.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Eric, any committee reports or board liaison?
Um, Board of Education, uh, last day of school will be June eighteenth, and that will also be graduation for high schools. Uh, there was a lot of public participation about gate fees, both for and against. So there will be a special meeting, uh, held on the subject to, uh, further discuss from the public and the board. The meeting has not been set yet, that I've noticed. I've looked. Bristol Housing Authority, David Hartley started on the board, uh, this past month and jumped right in. Uh, there was discussion about some ongoing projects and upgrades to some properties. Uh, we addressed some maintenance issues that are going to get fixed. Uh, there was a tenant meeting at Bonnie Acres, Chief Gould, uh, Chief Morello, the mayor, Representative Hoxa and myself attended. We listened to tenant concerns, um, and are working to find some solutions. We will attend next month's meeting to make sure everything's moving in the forward direction. Uh, one issue has already been addressed, and that was the flushing of the hydrants. And that was done yesterday, I believe, if not today.
Today.
So thank you to the Water Department for getting there quickly.
Yep, they did do that today. Thank them very much for that.
Yeah, it was scheduled for yesterday, but I think it came out today. So.
Yep.
Perfect.
Very good. Jackie?
I do not have any committee reports, Mayor.
Excellent. Sebastian?
No reports.
Cheryl?
Yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to share a couple of things that have come out of Public Works. One is, um, since the spring paving list came out, um, and was published, we've all received phone calls, when am I, is my street getting done? Why not? And, uh, Public Works has contracted out in the past to have the streets surveyed and they're rated on a scale from one to one hundred. And using this data, coupled with knowledge of utility company, gas, um, and water plans, streets with poor ratings are designated to be milled and repaved. The cost to outsources was expensive, so it was contracted every three to four years. And at the last Public Works Committee meeting, we gave approval to enter into a contract with a service that will bring the technology to us at a significant savings. Using, um, our own staff, we'll be able to rate our own streets annually, weekly, monthly, depend, you know, if we need. It's not a one-time shot. And we can even collect data on the streets, the catch basins and street signs that could be missing. And this data will be more timely and the documentation can be archived. And we save money and we're able to address which streets need attention faster. So I thought it was a fabulous, um, thing to share. You can visit this technology at their website, which is www dot Vialtics, that's V I A L Y T I C S dot com. Another thing out of Public Works is that the Connecticut Department of Transportation has announced a bus shelter replacement program. And the program appears to address bus shelters on private and city-owned properties. So the Public Works Board in collaboration with Transportation Committee will be considering options. So if there is a need out there, please let me know or Public Works knows so we can put this into our planning. And another thing from Public Works, I just wanted to share that was in the director's report. We're fortunate, we have a, a waste of energy plant right here in our community. And seventy towns that used to bring their waste to the Hartford Plant no longer have that option because the plant was shut down. In this next market, they are going to be paying one hundred and thirty-one dollars a ton to dispose of municipal solid waste. That was an increase from their prior rate of one oh six. To let you know, in comparison, we're paying seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. So there is a huge economic benefit to the community and to the taxpayer by having a local facility. And sometimes we, we don't learn about those factoids, and I love to share them. On the animal control facility, we're very excited that we have selected an architect. Rahouse Friedenfeld and Associates has been chosen to design the new facility. The committee meets the third Thursday of the month at five PM in case somebody's interested in checking it out. Thank you.
Yep, that's twelve C on our agenda too, so good. Andrew?
Unfortunately, I have nothing. All of my meetings landed on our budget hearings. For one, so.
Busy?
I'm free for the month.
Busy month. We're done with budget hearings for now. Okay. Uh, did we miss any others? No, we will move on to old business. And a couple items on old business. I'm actually going to take a opportunity to do the first one. Ray Rogazinski is actually on vacation this week, but I just wanted to alert you all to a memo that will come to Public Works, uh, when he gets back to Public Works Board meeting. And we are, uh, constructing the Hope Street Center Square parking garage that has started. They've started to do excavation. Unfortunately, they have run into unanticipated old foundations, and this is from before the Center Mall. So this is definitely going to create a little bit of a bump. There's, there is likely to be significant extra additional costs, but at this time, the cost is probably going to fall within the, uh, included allowance. So he just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. It's unfortunate, but this is a very common occurrence now with projects. They all seem to be going over and they have to dig like five to seven feet around it further and make sure that the ground is stable. So, um, more to come on that, but I just thought I would give you all the updates so that if we get a change order, which we might, in, in the next month or two, um, we want to be prepared for that. I just have to add the importance of this garage. This garage now supports the Carrier Project. The garage obviously supports Wheeler Health. And I will share with you that there are other developers in the area that are coming to us for spaces as well. So I'm knocking on wood that we hopefully have more spaces that would either be, um, you know, leased uh, or sold to, um, other developers. So it's important that we get this in and important that we stay on time. Uh, just as a quick update there, the carriers are still, I was in there last week. They are, um, saying that they will open in December and they will have renters and they have a lot of pre-leasing on their retail space as well. And it looks like that Wheeler Health will open midsummer. So that's the Public Works update. Jackie, you had a question as well too that I want to bring up, so I'll let you bring up the question today on an update.
Yeah, I, I was wondering today, um, if Fine Fettle had opened for business because, um, the revenue from True Leaf has gone down, so I thought maybe that Fine Fettle was taking business away from Truly, so.
Yep. So I did take the opportunity to reach out to Ben Zacks, who is one of the, um, proprietors and one of the, the founders of Fine Fettle. And he did give me an update, which I'm gonna pull open on my, um, phone. But before I get there, just to, to reiterate, the, uh, revenues have come down about five thousand dollars this past month. However, the revenues are probably anticipated to go up when both stores are open. We're gonna expect to see, I think, go the other way, maybe not. This was just maybe a slower month. By the way, it is April. April's a very, uh, important month for, for cannabis, so maybe we'll see a difference.
Through the chair and, and I don't know if it addresses, um, particularly Bristol, but I read an article recently that it's really, there's not enough product in the state. Because if you recall, all the product that they sell for retail has to be grown here in Connecticut. And this article addressed that that was leading to shortages of product in, in the retail market. And so that could be what is affecting True Leaf's ability to have additional sales. But I, you know, this was an article brought across.
I think you're onto something, because I'm gonna read what Ben sent to me, and there's a little piece in here that, uh, will, will relate to that. So they're flying through construction. They expect to seal May, come around May seventeenth, barring any hiccups. The week of May twentieth, all the security and IT gets installed. They've already scheduled the inspection for May twenty-eighth with DCP. They have to have that final regulatory side approval. If everything goes well, they probably have an opening on June fourteenth through twenty-first. By the way, all needs to go well, he's saying. We had initial delays and they had a bathroom. Uh, but what they're saying is depending on inventory availability for us in the state on the June fourteenth. So that would probably answer your question, but I think it gives everybody a pretty good update as to what's happening in that area. Any other questions or comments on that? Is there any other old business? From lawyers, we have anything? I don't think we have old business, any council members? All right, we'll move on to new business. I'm not aware of any new business. Is there any new business? We will move on to, uh, nine, which is resignations.
We have two. Dave Proleski was a two dash nine from the ARPA Task Force. And Donna Friday resigned from the Bristol Burlington Health District.
Great.
Through the chair, I would like to, um, put these resignations on file and have a letter sent to both, individuals thanking them for their service, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Um, I'm gonna start out with the first one. So, uh, ARPA, I would like to entertain a motion to reappoint Dave Proleski. He has been busy traveling. He actually thought that his excused absences would prevent him from being two dash nine. We are at the very tail end of a lot of the hard bulk work for ARPA. And so it, it doesn't make too much sense to go out and find new people to be on that task force. So I will entertain a motion to reappoint Dave Proleski.
So move.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. For Arts and Culture, I actually have two. You might have three that you saw listed, but we're gonna hold off right.
Right, we're gonna hold off.
So we are going to reappoint two members, uh, Walter Lewandowski and April Deuce. Uh, they both expire now four twenty-seven.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Andrew, I know you're looking at me. I'll, I'll just.
Oh, we're not sure. April is still, may come back off, but we will for now.
We'll reappoint her for now. Okay, is that what you were?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Not a problem. On the Energy Commission, uh, we have had probably one of the longest openings that we've had. So I'm very pleased to announce the appointment of Thomas Hick. And that will now expire four twenty-seven because the previous people have long expired. So it's a three-year term. Can I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second.
Second, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Um, on the Parking Authority, I would like a motion to replace Michael Petosa and appoint Amy Lowry. That term will expire on four twenty-seven.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And then the Opioid Task Force, uh, we have a young lady who's also interested in the Arts and Culture Commission. So Cheryl's gonna get with her to see if she can fill the other open spot there. But she does have some experience on, on, with opioids and wants to get involved. That's a task force, um, that doesn't require any expiration and we continue to grow that. So I'll entertain a motion to appoint Julie Christ to the Opioid Task Force.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have, uh, let me see, cut this up quickly, about seven or eight potential vacancies for May. Uh, there are a couple that turn over at this point and a couple of these resignations now that we need to take care of. So if you have people that are interested, please get them to us. I will just also parenthetically, and maybe I should publicly thank Mike Petosa for his service. I think he's been on the Parking Authority for in excess of twenty years. Um, and unfortunately, due to changes in party affiliation on that board while people were serving, Mike, Mike was the first to term to either end, resign, or, um, you know, need to, so we needed to replace him. As short of this is because we had too many Democrats serving. So, uh, we need to find unaffiliated voters to serve on these boards and commissions because they balance things out well, uh, well. So my apologies to Mike Petosa, but unfortunately by our minority representation, he wasn't able to continue to serve. That's all I have for appointments. And now we will move on to number eleven. I see Chief Hart here as well. This is a, uh, a contract for, uh, the Bristol, with the Bristol Fire Department and. This is a contract for the Bristol, with the Bristol Fire Department and Safety Priority Consultants, so I'll entertain the motion. If somebody wants to read that for me, Andrew or somebody else, Andrew's on fire. You got it, Freddie?
Open it.
I think you can read it right off the, right off the agenda.
I'll just read it off the agenda. I make a motion to approve the retainer agreement between the City of Bristol Fire Department and Safety Priority Consultants LLC, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the City of Bristol. Second.
Great, and Chief Hart, I'll ask you to come up. I'll give a high level here, and you can answer questions or add more. But I actually talked with Chief Hart today because we just put on Pointman Safety, which does a lot of workers' comps and things like this. This is very specific to the fire department with their OSHA upgrades that are required, and it's a complicated process, so I'll let you talk about it a little bit.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, Safety Priority, I watched a webinar sponsored by the Connecticut Career Chiefs Association with New England OSHA to give an overview of the changes that are coming down the pipe for the fire service with the changes to the OSHA nineteen-ten-one-fifty-six standard that governs fire brigades. They incorporate municipalities and private fire departments within that regulation now. So it's going to be a huge change, a enormous seismic change to the fire service because now they're incorporating by reference twenty-two of the NFPA standards, which means any sentence or reference within the standards that have shall or must has the force of law within OSHA. So we have to make sure that we're compliant. We're doing well on most things, but there are some standards that we really have to get the devils in the details as far as making sure we're compliant so that we don't run afoul of OSHA. So I met with Chip Darius from Safety Priority. His, I thought I had a pretty decent resume. His, it's plain to shame, it's probably eight or ten pages. He is an OSHA guru and is going to be a huge benefit for the department and the city to protect us in coming up with a plan to be, make sure we're compliant with the new OSHA regulations. With the retainer agreement, I did run that by court counsel. They vetted it, said it was okay, and he is willing to start as soon as we get the agreement signed.
Questions for Chief? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, oops, lost my agenda. Agenda, we're moving on to number twelve, which is contracts. We have a, quite a few contracts. And Roger, I know that you and Jackie had spoke, so maybe we'll do first a little bit of a Q and A on how the contracts work, because I think Jackie has a question, and then we'll take them one by one after that.
Well, my question really pertains to G of the contracts. So I'm not going to go through all the other ones that, as far as the boiler replacements and the fire alarm. This is more of a curiosity type of question, Roger.
Yeah.
As noted, Holzer Electric was awarded the bid for Hubble for the fire alarm panel. So I was trying to get a logical explanation as to why the bids from the same company are so different for each school. For example, Holzer, their bid for Hubble was two-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. Bristol Eastern High School, their bid there was one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and Bristol Central was a million, six-eighty-five thousand. So is it because the fire alarm panels are different?
So the name is a little misleading in terms of what the contracts are, and that's a big part of it. It's not just a panel that we're replacing. Several years ago, we went through and had replaced some of the fire panels in some of the schools and found that when you upgrade to the new technology, it changes the wiring associated with all of these panels that are out there connecting to the devices. So you don't end up just replacing the panel, you replace the devices that are in each room as well as the wiring that goes to each room. So in Hubble School, it's a significantly smaller footprint. So given that, there are a less number of devices that are out there and less lengths of wiring that go into there. By the time you leave Hubble School and you get to Bristol Central into Bristol Eastern, it's significantly more acreage. I mean, it's just, was it a hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet per building? It's just enormous structures, so to run that wiring, that amount of difference, that amount of distance, is just cumbersome. And I think that's one of the reasons why you might see some of the companies giving different numbers on the different projects, because I think they recognize that these projects are so large that they're not able to do all of the projects at once. So they'll put in a good number for one site and target that one site, and then say, I know that I'll get that one, and I'll put in another number if they all of a sudden give it to me for the other one, and I'll just go out and hire crazy people to do it. But they recognize that it's an enormous scope of work for these projects.
Yeah, I actually was wondering if the size of the school had anything to do with it, so.
Yeah.
That's a great explanation. I appreciate it, Roger. Thank you.
Certainly. I do applaud the Board of Education for reacting really well to try and manage their ARPA spend. As you may recall, they had planned to do an air conditioning upgrade to Chippens Hill Middle School, and at the twelfth hour had to retool because the cost for that project was through the roof. So they ended up coming up with a series of smaller projects that you'll see here. Most of them are here, but there are other ones that we've already taken care of, such as the building management systems controls at all the buildings. We've already started that one, and they'll be well finished well before September thirtieth. But so far, I think they've spent roughly five-and-a-half million dollars of the eight million. So at least that's what I've seen for projects, and there may be other ones that they've done as well that I'm just not thinking of. So they've done a very good job.
Yep, and that S R ARPA money is done at the eight million. They don't have any more, and this is all time-bound now. So that's why we're seeing so many contracts at once as well, too. So I appreciate you bringing it up, and hopefully that answered your question, or you have another.
One more. So as far as the boiler replacement now, why would the bids on that be so different?
So I'm not really sure why. I mean, the boiler contracts are challenging to work with some of these companies because the projects are diverse themselves. The high schools, for example, are much larger because they need to send that much more heat around there, but also they're quite a bit more aged. And that's one of the challenges that you'd have, is that we don't know what's inside of these boilers. So we have allowances contained within the specs to deal with asbestos on the outside chance that there's asbestos in the ribs. So they can't go into those ribs until there are no kids in the school. Well, first of all, until the heat is closed down, which typically speaking would be April fifteenth. But they would then wait until there are no kids in the school to dig into them, tear them apart, and see whether or not there's asbestos that then they need to set up a containment. The bids do have an allowance for those sites, that if there is no asbestos in the ribs, that we would then get a credit back for work that's not done toward it.
All makes sense. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. I think we'll be able to kind of fly through these. We are going to do them one by one, because they all require votes. But Roger, if we have additional questions as we pick them up, I'll let you know. So if somebody could read twelve A for me, is a motion?
I can read it. To award contract twenty-twenty-four-dash-zero-eighty-one curbing and sidewalk repair program to Martin Laverre Contractor, Inc., in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy dollars, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to effect said contract.
Second.
Any questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. B? Keep going, Jackie, you're doing well. You earned it for the questions.
To award contract twenty-twenty-four-dash-zero-eighty-two permanent patch of utility trenches in city streets to Leyden Industries LLC in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-eighty-five dollars, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract.
Second.
Questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? A motion carries. Twelve C?
Can I read C? Smokey did.
Yeah, we'll do some public work. Go ahead. We'll shift it up here.
All right, to award, I make a motion to award contract two-P-two-four-dash-zero-three-two Architectural Engineering Services relative to construction of new animal control facility to Rahouse Friedenfeld and Associates, L L P, in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, and to refer to the Office of Corporation Counsel for contract review, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract. Second.
Great. Cheryl, anything else to add? You talked about the animal control facility a little.
No, you know, we had, you know, I think, received around ten proposals, eight, and we narrowed it down to three that we brought in to interview, and we left, and I think the committee was in consensus, that two really addressed our biggest concerns, which was the welfare of the animals and the humans that would take care of them, and from an environmental, and to make the facility less stressful, to ensure, you know, that they would have a peaceful time when they stayed with us, and that the facility would enhance adoption. And after working out the prices, this was the firm that really had the consensus overall from the committee.
Excellent. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, this one's Erica, so go ahead, Cheryl, I'll let you go again, and we'll switch it around.
Okay, this is.
E.
Oh, I didn't have D. Oh, hold on, give me a second. I got it, I got it. I had the boiler one, it took its place. Okay. All right. I would like to make a motion to approve contract from Cot Systems, Inc., for vitals index add-on-dash-vitals index data conversion, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract, and to refer to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Great. Any questions on this one? We have Erica here, too, if you had them, but this is our, our flunky stuff, and the next one will be similar, too, so Cheryl, get ready. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. You could do it right off, I believe, the agenda, too. It's the same motion.
Okay, let me just.
E.
I went too far. Okay, to, I make a motion to approve contract from Cot Systems, Inc., for marriage backfile services, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to affect said contract, and to refer to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So now we move on to some of the school stuff. Eric, will you do F for me? It's the school stuff.
Award contract, I want to make a motion to award contract two-C-twenty-four-dash-eighty-eight or dash-zero-eighty-eight boiler replacement at E P Hubble School, Modern Mechanical Systems, Inc., in the amount of four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Do the other one for Hubble for me, Eric.
Award contract two-C-twenty-four-dash-zero-eight-nine fire alarm panel replacement at E P Hubble School, El Holzer Electric Company, in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, H.
This is the panel for Bristol Central.
Correct, H.
To award contract two-C-twenty-four-zero-nine-zero fire alarm panel replacement at Bristol Central High School, Banton Construction Company, in the amount of six-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions? Are you sure we should do this for Central? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I was just joking, because we're going to do Eastern now, my alma mater.
Yep. I would make a motion to award contract two-C-twenty-four-dash-zero-nine-one boiler replacement at Bristol Eastern High School, who Air Temp Mechanical Services, Inc., in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-six-hundred, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And we get another one for Eastern, because they're.
I'd like to make a motion to award contract two-C-twenty-four-dash-zero-nine-two fire alarm panel replacement at Bristol Eastern High School, El Holzer Electric Company, in the amount of one-million-three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have one more for Chip and Sale.
Let me read it.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to award contract number two-C-twenty-four-dash-zero-ninety-five boiler replacement at Chippens Hill Middle School to Crest Mechanical Services, Inc., in the amount of three-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, and to authorize the mayor, acting mayor, to execute.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And Sebastian, I haven't picked on you, so I'm going to ask you for the resolution, if you would, on thirteen. If it's long, we could waive the reading of the resolution, if you'd like.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And now just generally the resolution, which I think you can read off of.
I make a motion to pass a resolution to approve the city application for a six-million-eight-hundred-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for the C T Department of Economic and Community Development for the Route Seventy-two corridor improvement project.
Second.
Great, and any conversation on this one? This is the CIF grant application. Remember, this is really going to focus on the first part of the Route Seventy-two area, which is Park Street, and then there'll be kind of a combination, but more of a Connecticut D O T part for Riverside Avenue. So this is a resolution, so we need to do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Howe?
Yes.
Councilmember Olson?
Aye.
Councilmember Paniotto?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosengren?
Yes.
Councilmember Tebault?
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
And the mayor.
Yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Number fourteen is the executive session. Everybody will come into us, executive session on the council, lawyers, and?
And our outside counsel, attorney.
That and jury as well, okay. I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We're unmuted, and just a reminder, no votes. We're taking an executive session. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We have a motion. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of Darrell Rolenter versus City of Bristol for any and all workers' compensation claims filed by Darrell Rolenter for the total amount of eighty-thousand dollars. The dates of these claims are listed below but are not limited to the following: May twenty-nine, nineteen ninety-one, March five, nineteen ninety-two, April twenty, nineteen ninety-two, excuse me, June four, nineteen ninety-two, August twenty-six, nineteen ninety-two, December ten, nineteen ninety-two, August third, nineteen ninety-three, June twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-five, May twelve, nineteen ninety-seven, April six, nineteen ninety-eight, May 26, 1998, March 29, 1999, April 16, 1999, January 30, 2001, August 27, 2001, March 12, 2002, July 9, 2002, February 10, 2003, November 17, 2003, February 19, 2004, May 24, 2004, October 18, 2005, October 24, 2005, October 10, 2006, November 11, 2006, March 5, 2007, March 6, 2007, May 31, 2007, November 2, 2007, June 5, 2008, August 20, 2008, November 3, 2008, October 23, 2009, July 14, 2010, July 26, 2010, July 29, 2010, August 28, 2011, November 25, 2011, November 20, 2013, April 25, 2014, November 12, 2014, November 20, 2014, December 9, 2014, July 11, 2016, September 30, 2016, October 11, 2017, January 22, 2019, June 2, 2020, June 22, 2020, and February 24, 2021. I further move that the mayor, acting mayor, corporation counsel or assistant corporation counsel be authorized to execute the full and final settlement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I don't believe we have any other business to come before us, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.